I hear it because I can't move.
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Can you hear me okay?
Chair Naveros, yes, this is Jess McNeely here. You perfectly fine.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to do the sound check before the meeting will begin promptly at four, or excuse me, the study session.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. McNeely, my. Mr. Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. It is four o'clock. So if you would please start our study session agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jess McNeely with Community Development Department staff. And like to welcome the Planning and Zoning Commissioners and and staff and other members of the community who have joined us for this study session. This is your regularly scheduled study session for January twenty fifth. The first item on your study session, Chair and Commissioners, is a list of the applications that are scheduled for public hearing for next month. Wednesday, February twenty second, two thousand and twenty three. So we will quickly run through these cases to familiarize the Commissioners. With these cases, we have staff who will who will present these and take any questions or comments from the Commissioners. We would like to remind the Commissioners, Madam Chair, that that this is just information informational to familiarize the Commissioners with the with these cases. And and we need to avoid discussion of the merits of the case and certainly avoid any discussion of findings as required by our zoning ordinance. And with that, the first case on your list, I'd like to refer everyone to your study session agenda is case number CUP twenty two one oh one. It's a conditional use permit request to use a recreational vehicle as a permanent residence in the Valley area. Bob is managing this case, and I see he already has his screen shared. So Bob, go ahead and share share this case with the Commissioners.
Thank you, Jess. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. This case is referred to as the Conifal RV as a residence. And the proposal is to install an RV, in this case, a park model RV on the subject property. Solar's proposed for electricity. They want to haul water, haul the water and stored in tanks. And the board had been issued a wastewater permit, so they want to put on a permanent septic system on the property. And this is a vicinity map showing the the subject property. This is Highway one eighty coming in, coming through Valley or Grand Canyon Junction. This highway six, State Route sixty four. This is the corner right up here. This is the airport. So you can get the idea. It's just right off of Highway one eighty. This narrow photo is showing the subject property. You can see it's on the corner of Dewey Drive and Vernon Road. Dewey Drive looks like the best access to get to it, just pretty much not much development around this area. And this is a site plan showing showing the site, and you can see down here they call it a tiny home. It is, and we the the case I'll present to you later also has the same thing going on where is it a tiny home or is it an RV? In this case, it's a Riva standard RV, so it's a certified RV, but they like to refer to it as a hot tiny home, and you'll see why when you see it. And you can see the solar panels and also the septic system looks like. And this is the proposed recreational vehicle. So it's actually, it's actually a pretty nice. RV here, Park Model RV, has a sunroom. It's actually pretty nice. So but it is a Riva certified, so it does qualify it for an RV as a residence. And with that, I'll take any questions from the Commission.
Mr. Short, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I am not seeing any. So, Mr. McNeely, let's go ahead and bump to the next case, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next case is CUP twenty three zero one. It's a request to actually renew an expired conditional use permit in the Doni Park area for Community Center. Zach is managing this case. I see he already has his screen shared. So Zach, if you'd want to go ahead and and present this case to the Commissioners.
Thanks, Jess and Madam Chair and Commissioners. So as Jess said, this is a conditional use permit. That was expired. Otherwise, it would have been probably renewed administratively. I haven't seen, I haven't seen any. Complaints on the case. This is a community center is what we're calling it, and on the map here, you can see here is Coach Field Road, Peaks View Park. And the subject property is here. The applicants have their existing home on the property, and in two thousand and nineteen, they were approved for this RV garage to have a. Excuse me a second. I'll just go ahead and. For the audience, if you'd please just mute yourself and and turn your camera off while we're presenting. So the applicant holds what fit as a zoning ordinance definition of community center. Into their RV garage and really what this use is, is the applicant on one or two Saturdays from each month from ten AM to two. They just hold classes for children and teens to teach them woodworking, bicycle repair, and that sort of things. So it's a really pretty low impact use. The topic that was of most concern for the original approval was with the machinery running inside the RV garage. Would it be audible to neighboring property owners? And actually, Commissioner Ruggles was a great help in. Determining how much, how many decibels would be heard from the use to neighboring residences. And it was found that the impact was negligible. So I think this renewal will be a pretty straightforward renewal, but I'm happy to. Look into any questions or comments, things that might the applicant, the commission might want me to have in the analysis.
Hey, Zach, I have a comment for you.
Yes, sir.
I would greatly appreciate the removal of the word expert on that last bit presentation slide.
Okay, fair enough. Well, you've always been, we can always count on you to give us some pretty good advice regarding the sound levels, but noted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schwartz, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I am not seeing any other hands raised or unmutes from the Commissioners. So, Mr. McNeely, let's go ahead and bump to the third item, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. The third case for next month's public hearing is ZC twenty two eighteen. It is a zone change request from RR five, five acre minimum to RR one, one acre minimum. Kelly is managing this case, Kelly Bingham, and I see she already has her screen shared. So Kelly, go ahead and and present to the Commission.
Thank you, Jess. This is ZC twenty two eighteen. Let me see if I can change the slide here. There we go. So this is located at seven one seven five Naval Observatory Road. This is right along the I forty west where Route sixty six. As the on-ramp. It is one point zero seven acres and the zoning is currently RR five. So as you can see, it's currently not developable for what the applicant wants to do, which is a single family dwelling. Here's an aerial photo of the parcel. You can see over to the east is the West Peak subdivision. This parcel was created as part of the West Peak subdivision when it was approved in nineteen ninety three. As you can see, this little portion is cut off by Naval Observatory Road. They didn't think it made sense to add that on to any of the other parcels in the subdivision, so that's why it's undersized. And during the creation of that subdivision, with the approval. It was stated that the parcel could eventually be developed with the approval of a variance. So it wasn't set aside for open space or anything like that. So when the applicant went to apply for a variance, they weren't able to make the findings. So unfortunately, that request was denied. And both of the variance request and the zone change are generally opposed. But generally speaking, this should be a pretty straightforward zone change request. They just want to change the zone to RR one to be able to develop a single family dwelling. Since the variance didn't go through, this was their other option. Are there any questions on this one?
Ms. Bingham, this is Chair Aunt Taveras, and on the slide that is in front of us, it says to be considered. The first bulleted point is how the Board of Adjustments rationale is or is not applicable to findings of fact for a zone change. Are you saying that the Board of Adjustments rationale is not applicable to findings of fact? Or is there something we need to be clued in to at this point?
Yes, Chair Aunt Taveras. So that that's pretty much it. Staff does not believe that the rationale that was used to deny this variance would apply to the findings of fact for a zone change. Because the findings of fact for a variance are more strict, so they weren't able to make those findings. However, staff is is making sure to respect their findings, but still make sure that we're only focusing on the ones that are applicable here for the zone change, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. And I think, and thank you for that clarification. So that we don't have any confusion on this, and we don't bring in their rationale into to try to incorporate it into our findings. So thank you very much. That's helpful information. And I, Ms. Bingham, I am not seeing any other hands raised or anyone unmuted. So with that, Mr. McNeely, would you please move to the next case?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. The fourth case for next month's hearing is Zone Change twenty two twenty one. It is a zone change request from G to CG ten thousand. Essentially to expand existing CG ten thousand on a portion of this parcel onto the remainder of the parcel. Zach is managing this case, and he has his screen share. So Zach, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely, and Madam Chair, members of the Commission. So some of you might recognize this property. This is in Antelope Hills, so north on Highway eighty nine, north of Doni Park. And it's this property here. It had the former San Agua Trading Post, and I think there's like a three or four bedroom. Motel on this existing property. Those aren't being used right now. The applicant does have administrative approval for an RP V park for a few units on the CG ten thousand, the existing CG ten thousand zone. Portion of this property and the applicant's looking to expand the CG ten thousand zone to the entirety of the property to do a few more RVs. So these reddish pinkish units are on the CG ten thousand zone portion of the property. And staff has administratively approved these. But in order for these additional five in the more immediate term and nine out into the future. RV spots that the applicant wants to develop requires this zone change. I believe, and and the applicant is online with us if you have any questions for them. But I believe the applicant came to buy this property in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. We went through the permitting of this. And they've really done a pretty good job of improving the property and where it has had been deteriorating since. So staff finds this is a good zone change that should help to bring the rest of the property back into a good condition. And in the initial reviews for analysis of the case, staff is looking at. E dot encroachment permitting is what they have already adequate. They did have these other commercial uses on the property. So the assumption is probably it shouldn't be a big deal. Staff can condition that on the zone change request. I didn't get a whole lot of information on lighting and landscaping. And staff will discuss with the applicants, you know, what we might be looking at for that. It's also something that can be just conditioned on the zone change prior to developing the additional spaces. And I did want to note that there is a sign on the property. It was too tall, and some of the colors of the illumination were not. Meeting the current zoning ordinance. They were legal nonconforming for a while. But they lost their nonconforming stand status, but the Board of Adjustment did approve a variance for their existing sign. And it's a pretty cool sign. It's a historical sign. So that's just a portion of the development as well. But if the staff has any comment or sorry, the commission has any comments, questions, or things that I should look at in my analysis of the case, happy to take those.
All right, Mr. Schwartz, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Again, I am not seeing any questions for you. So, Mr. McNeely, please proceed with our agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The fifth and final case for next month's public hearing is ZC twenty three zero one. This is a request for a zone change from G, the general zone, to MHP, the manufactured home park zone in the Valley area. Bob is managing this case. So Bob, if you could go ahead and share your screen and present to the Commission. Thank you. Bob, you may be muted because we're not hearing you.
I am sorry. I was having a little trouble mute sharing my screen, and it looks like it is shared. Things are getting in the way here. So there we go.
There we go.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. McNeely. This case is the Grand Canyon Tiny Home Village. Although they the applicant like wants to call it a tiny home village, it actually is Riva standard RVs, which are permitted in the MHP zone. And. There we go. And the request in this case is a zone change from the general zone to the MHP zone. That's manufactured home park zone. On a forty point two eight, two eight acre parcel for the development of sixty two RV certified tiny home spaces. And they're outlining right now as. Sorry about that. As twenty short-term rentals, twenty one long-term rentals, and twenty one lot lease sites. This would not be something that would be part of the zoning. That would be very hard to, you know, to find compliance with. So that would probably not part of the zone change. The amenities include a playground, dog park, walkways and and gazebos. And they also want to reserve a corner of the site for a fire station on point nine acres. And that is the High Country Fire and Rescue that is expanding into this area and and creating a fire district in this area. So that's very good news. The fire station would require a conditional use permit in the MHP zone. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. This is Highway sixty four. This is Highway one eighty right here, Grand Canyon Junction. And this is High Grove Road, and this is just right north of Valley or even part of Valley. This is an aerial photo showing the subject property. Again, you see State Route sixty four going north to the canyon. This is High Grove, kind of the last road on the way out of Valley. Note that there is a roadway through here. This is actually an access easement. It's part of the Grand Canyon. Branches subdivision or unsubdivided land subdivision. So there's an access easement through here. So the applicant is proposing to access from the back, and then in the front, they'll have an emergency access. Which has a lot of advantages in having to deal with the the A dot and getting permitting for that. Especially since they're so close to what's already an access here on High Grove Road. And this is their site plan. Again, you can see that they come up this access easement. This would be the main primary access from the front. This would be their very large wastewater system. They would have pipes in the ground and hookups throughout. They delineate where each type of rental would be, short term here, long term here, and lot lease here. Lot lease would mean that you would bring your own RV, basically, and and lease one of the lots. You can see they have, they have actually a garden composter. They have some playground equipment in two different places. They have these gazebos scattered throughout. They have a walkway around this area and around here as well. And then a kind of a pass-through area here for for walking. They have a dog park, so it's kind of a nice place. And in, I'm sure the commission understands that in Valley or Grand Canyon Junction, there's a real shortage of places for people to live. So this would be a really good thing for that area. Now, if you look up here on this side, this would be the the new fire station. Like I said, it would have to come back and get a conditional use permit in this if it the MHP zone is changed. And with that, I think that's it. I'll take any questions from the Commission.
Okay, Mr. Short, this is Chair Aunt Taveras again. And, oh, Commissioner Ruggles, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I unmuted by accident here, so I have no comments or questions. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. Just didn't want to skip over you. All right. Then, Mr. Short, I don't see any questions. So, Mr. McNeely, let's go ahead and bump to the administrative renewal.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I would refer the Commissioners back to their agenda, and we have one case. Pending administrative renewal, provided it that staff finds that that it is eligible for administrative renewal. And it is CUP twenty two dash one twenty three. It's a conditional use permit for a cottage industry in the Parks area. Kelly, Kelly Bingham, are one of our planners, is managing this case. Were there any questions or comments from any of the Commissioners regarding this CUP administrative renewal?
Okay, Mr. McNeely, Chair Aunt Taveras, I am not seeing any. So let's go ahead and bump to Community Development Department update, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So you see on your Community Development Department update portion of your agenda, we have six items there. The first item is always our monthly reminder that the that the county is continuing to partner in the Route sixty six Brownfields EPA grant. As as managed by NACOG, and of course, Melissa Shaw is our staff member who works with that project. Melissa does have another county partner with her this evening to give a to give a short presentation on that item. Mr. Laney, however, we would like to run through the rest of the department update first. To have a better idea of how much time Mr. Laney has available for his presentation. Is that okay with you, Madam Chair?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Item number two here on your department update, just also reminding you that staff is continuing to work with the City of Flagstaff on the regional plan update. If anyone has any questions on that, we do have Melissa Shaw with us, who also is our our point person on that project. So Melissa, was there any update that you wanted to give the Commissioners? And Commissioners, is there are, do any of you have any questions about the the status or progress of that project?
Jess and Trent Taveros, this is Melissa Shaw. I would just like to. Give the the Commission just a brief update about the status of the regional plan update, and we. The project team is moving quickly into the scenario planning process. So I think I mentioned this last time, and we had a brief presentation on what will be involved with that. But you'll soon be seeing notices and for the rest of the community as well about workshops that you'll be able to participate in. And we do hope that people who are listening in and will will do wide outreach on these will will join in these workshops to engage. Age and to learn about scenario planning for their region. Thanks. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Michelle, I'm not seeing any. So, Mr. McNeely, let's go to number three, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On item three here, we're just reminding you that we have initiated. Our ten-year update to the Coquenino County Comprehensive Plan. We need to have that update completed in two thousand and twenty five in order to meet the the ten-year update requirement as outlined in state statute. We held a scoping workshop. We held a scoping workshop. That was a workshop to help establish the scope of what all the update will entail. That was held on January thirteenth. We had two Planning and Zoning Commissioners in attendance, Commissioner Best and Commissioner Clifford. So we appreciate their input at that scoping workshop. It was very valuable getting information from all attendees, stakeholders in the community about what they would like to see in an update to the comprehensive plan. The second part of that workshop, in which our goal is to come up with a scoping statement for the comp plan update, that second workshop is actually tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon. And we hope that Commissioners Best and Clifford can join us again for that. So that will wrap up the scoping phase of the comp plan update. Melissa, if there's anything you'd like to add, please feel free. And likewise, if any of the commissioners have questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Just while I will add that we will bring the results of the scoping workshop and the scoping statement back to the commission for a presentation next month.
Yes. Thanks, Melissa. Madam Chair, any questions from you or the other commissioners on the conference of plan update?
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antiveras. I do not personally have any, and I don't see any of the other commissioners alerting that they do either. So let's bump to number four.
Okay, number four. And Melissa, also, please stand by on this one. The Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan Committee met last week on January nineteenth to review proposed amendments to their area plan, which actually was recently adopted by the by the Board of Supervisors as recommended by you, the Planning Commission. So Melissa, anything you'd like to add on that? And likewise, commissioners, if anyone has questions, please let us know.
I would add that there's, it's likely that we will be bringing that also back to the commission at next month's study session.
Okay, Mr. McNeely, again, Chair Antiveras, I'm not seeing, I don't have any comments or questions, and I don't see the other commissioners that do. So let's go ahead and go to number five.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item five, a reminder, as we told you last month, that staff is working to revise the lighting code portion of the Coconino County zoning ordinance. And we're doing that based on the City of Flagstaff's recent update. All of this was really prompted by the joint land use study and all the research and efforts that went into the land you study and the recommendation of the city and the county having the same lighting code and share lighting specialists, which we are now doing. So along with updating the lighting code portion of the zoning ordinance, staff is looking at some non-substantive zoning ordinance edits, cleanups, if you will. And those are in progress right now. We will continue to update as we have drafts available to make you aware of those and update you on those proposed edits and study sessions. We would anticipate bringing those to you at some point this spring. Any questions from the commission on updates to the zoning ordinance, including the lighting code portion of the zoning ordinance?
Mr. McNeely, Chair Antiveras, I am not seeing any. So we can go ahead and go to the item number six, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Item number six, letting you know that a standalone county short-term rental ordinance, referring to this with abbreviation STR, actually went to the Board of Supervisors a couple days ago on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, for a work session. We got a little bit of input or feedback on the proposed ordinance. The proposed ordinance is very limited on what some recent state legislation allowed local government to include in local ordinances regarding short-term rentals. We are currently on track for bringing it back to the Board of Supervisors for their adoption, approval, and adoption on February twenty-eighth. We actually now have the short-term rental draft ordinance and a helpful flyer that we would be putting out to the community and distributing at our webpage. It's actually at the homepage of our website, which is coconino dot AZ dot GOV, and then Community Development. So any questions on the short-term rental ordinance, standalone short-term rental ordinance that will go to the board on February twenty-eighth?
Commissioner Bass, please go ahead.
Since it's pretty early in the game, Jess, could you give us a couple of high points of this? Is this just very basic stuff and probably not as deep as we got into when we passed our ordinance some years ago?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Best, you described that quite well, Commissioner Best. This allows local governments to require a license or a permit, if you will, and that permit will be through our apartment. Much the same, you would get like a temporary use permit through our online portal permitting system. There are some requirements with the short-term rental owners or operators being required to notify their surrounding neighbors, their immediate surrounding neighbors, that their property is operating as a short-term rental and providing phone number to those neighbors for response in case of issues. Likewise, the operators have to provide their phone number, contact information to the renters of the short-term rentals for emergency purposes. Few other pretty minor requirements that are not the types of requirements that are managed by the zoning ordinance, so not the types of things that this body normally sees. Some pretty simple things, complaint process, the option of having fines if there are verified violations. And the option of the county being able to suspend a short-term rental license if there were three verified violations within a year. It actually delves into quite a few criminal issues. One of the reasons why it's really in no way tied to the zoning ordinance. But that's pretty much the long and the short of it. It's an easy read. We have it right at our website, along with a helpful flyer that should be helpful to operators and their neighbors. So does that answer your question, Commissioner Bass?
Yeah, that's kind of what I expected. No chance we can tax them any differently than anybody else.
It does include, it's within the draft ordinance. It does require, it does include a taxing provision.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bass. Any other questions, Madam Chair or commissioners, on the proposed short-term rental ordinance?
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antiveras, and I am not seeing any. So if we're going to circle back to number one with the presentation, Ms. Shaw, how long is that presentation?
Chair Antiveras, we can make it about ten or fifteen minutes.
Okay, all right. Let's go ahead and proceed with that, please.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and start my video, and then excuse me, I'm going to share my screen. And then we'll have Dave Laney do the presentation. So give me a second to share a screen, and I will turn that over to Dave.
All right.
Okay, and yeah, so just let me just introduce Dave. So Dave is with StanTech, and he is actually kind of the key person working through a contract with NACOG and helping all of us in the coalition make this grant work. So Dave, thank you so much for joining us today. And I'll run through the slides. Just let me know when to advance them.
Okay. What we call this is Northern Arizona Property Revitalization Program. So keep that in mind as I'm going through this. You'll understand how it's funded and how it works, I think, as I go through the slides. So Melissa, I'm going to go to the next. There was an EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant awarded in twenty-nineteen. The money from the grant, approximately six hundred thousand dollars, became available October first of twenty-nineteen. And the grant was awarded to Northern Arizona Council of Governments that includes and a coalition that includes City of Flagstaff, Winslow, County Camp Verde, and Coconino and Yabapai Counties. Originally, this was a three-year grant, but EPA gave NACOG a one-year extension. So the grant currently runs through September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three. The nice thing about the grant is that it's a hundred percent grant-funded, so there are no matching funds required. None of the coalition members had to put up any money whatsoever to get this funding. And the grant funds can be used on both publicly and privately owned sites if eligible. The most important thing about this grant is that it's not an enforcement action. So there's not, if property owners want to use the grant to get an assessment of their property, they don't get a phone call, they don't get a letter in the mail, they don't get a knock on the door afterwards requiring any additional action. The, it's one of the few programs I know that EPA has that doesn't involve any enforcement. The goal is just to give property owners information about their properties, and then it's up to them to decide what, if any, additional work they might want to do, be that, you know, renovating a building or selling a property or doing some sort of redevelopment. Next. Next slide. Essentially, the Northern Arizona Property and Business Revitalization Program that's funded by the grant is designed to identify, plan for, and provide funding and technical assistance to property and business owners who are looking to reuse, revitalize, and redevelop property with an emphasis on vacant, abandoned, lighted, underutilized, and sometimes contaminated property. About seventy percent of these properties either have no contamination or it's at such low levels that it's not a concern. The goal is to improve economic and workforce development and encourage economic growth. Next slide. This just shows who's participating in the coalition. Next slide. Next slide. A brownfield as defined by EPA is any property, the redevelopment or expansion of which is complicated due to the presence or potential presence of contaminants or hazardous substances. But like I said before, about seventy percent of these properties don't have significant contamination. What they all do have is they've got a poorly documented history of prior use. So, you know, many of them have been developed and used over the last ten, twenty, thirty, fifty years. And, you know, investors, banks, developers, and prospective purchasers are not really certain about what kinds of risks are involved with these properties. But with these free assessments that property owners can get with this grant, a lot of that gets addressed. And we have seen properties that have been stuck and have not been moving either sell or get bank loans or investment in a fairly short period of time after these assessments are completed. Next slide. You might know about some traditional brownfields, like old gas stations, old dry cleaners, old manufacturing facilities. Next slide. But you may not know that with this particular grant, we can do a lot of other types of buildings. We can do old strip malls and shopping centers. We can do old school buildings, churches, hospitals, health clinics, vacant lots. You'd be surprised at how many different types of properties actually take advantage of this grant. Next slide. And of course, if you've got a high concentration of brownfields, it negatively impacts your property, your community, because they're not creating jobs, they're not generating property or sales tax in, and they're not generating investment opportunities. Developers, investors tend to go elsewhere. They see a lot of brownfields. Next slide. On the other hand, the data shows that for every dollar of grant funding that's invested in a brownfield, on average, twenty dollars of private investment are invested in that same property. And property values go up by five to fifteen percent, not just on the brownfield, but on properties within a four-block area all around the brownfield. And obviously, they, you know, redeveloping brownfields improves quality of life, reduces potential exposure to contaminants, and thus, you know, improves public health and helps the environment. Next slide. So I'm going to go through the things that we do with the Brownfield Grant very quickly. The first thing that we have done is to do an inventory of all of the coalition member communities. So we did one in Coconino County, we've done one in Flagstaff. And the idea is to look at publicly available information to see what properties might have some sort of previous environmental history that could benefit from the grant. We came up with a total of sixty different brownfield properties in Camp Verde, Coconino County, Cottonwood, Flagstaff, Prescott, and Sedona. Next slide. These are just some pictures of some of those. Next slide. We also have been doing community outreach and engagement. We did a number, because of COVID, we had to do a number of meetings online back when the grant first got started. But we also did an in-person outreach event in Flagstaff in September twenty-twenty-one. And one in Prescott, that same month, there's another lunch and learn that City of Flagstaff is holding next Tuesday, January thirty-first, from eleven-thirty to one PM in City Hall to help folks know about the grant. There's also several social media advertisements or informational items that have been sent out. And there's a website that NACOG has, City of Flagstaff has, and I'm not sure if there's a specific place where folks that are interested in the county can go, Melissa.
We have a link to, we have a link to the NACOG website on our webpage, so yeah.
Okay, all right. Next slide. So it's very simple. If property owners want to get a free assessment, they fill out a two-page site nomination form that just asks what's the address, who's the owner, what is the history of the property, what is the proposed future use, and what's the timing? Because sometimes if you've got a, you know, you're waiting on a bank loan, or you've got a developer who is anxious to get going on something, we have to fast-track some of the assessments. But the site nomination form can help us figure that out. Next slide. Then for hazardous substances like hazardous substances sites, like buildings that are built before nineteen eighty that have asbestos or lead-based paint, those go to EPA for review and approval. And for petroleum sites like old gas stations or auto repair facilities, those go to Arizona Department of Environmental Quality for approval. It's a fairly straightforward process, and there have not been a whole lot of properties that have not been approved for these assessments by either EPA or ADQ. The main thing is that the property owners can't be the parties that also put contaminations. ADQ, the main thing is that the property owners can't be the parties that also put contamination on site. If that's the case, then they're not eligible, but otherwise. You know, if it's somebody that bought an old gas station and they don't plan to use it as a gas station, they want to turn it into, I don't know, a coffee shop or a bookstore or whatever. They're entirely, they're definitely eligible for use of this grant. Next step, or next slide. The type of assessments that are done include Phase One Environmental Site Assessment, which are basically a historical. Review of old aerial photographs, site, the city directories, sandblow and fire insurance maps, things like that. We also interview the property owner. The value of those is somewhere between thirty-five hundred and five thousand dollars, I think about a month to do. But for folks with eligible property, the cost to them is zero. If there is a recognized environmental condition in the Phase One Environmental Site Assessment, then we do a Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment where we will collect. Samples and send it to a lab for testing. Those can be pretty expensive. From say ten or fifteen thousand dollars up to fifty thousand dollars or more. The good news is for eligible property owners, the cost to them using this grant is zero. Lastly, we do hazardous building materials surveys where we look for asbestos-based paint in older buildings. Collect samples, send those to the lab, and those can be anywhere from between five and twenty-five thousand dollars coming on the side of the building. But once again, the cost to eligible property owners using the grant is zero. Next slide. Next slide. These are some of the the properties, some of the twenty-two properties that have already been assessed with the grant. You can see it runs the gamut between old gas stations and, you know, construction yards. Through to, you know, older restaurants. Things like that. It's it's just about any type of property that you can think of, any type of commercial or industrial property. Currently, EPA does not. Improve any of these grant funds for single-family residential, but they'll go except just about anything else, including. Multi-family residential. Next. It's like. Here's some more. You know, you can see at the bottom here, even the. The rescue mission in Flagstaff, the homeless shelter there has taken advantage of this. And they were able to actually leverage the assessment that they got for free with this grant to get. Grant funding to pay to have all the asbestos taken out of. The building that they've been using since the fifties, never had an assessment on, so that's been a real success story. Next slide. This is just some more. There you can see there's a school here, there's City of Prescott, City Hall, which is an older building. And they wanted to sell it, but they didn't know if it was asbestos or lead-based paint there. Next slide. Here's an important slide for you to know or take note of. You can see that some of the coalition members, for example, Cocon. County Camp Verde has used a lot of money out of the grant and has done a lot of assessments. But some of the the coalition members, not so much, including Coconino County. There are one or two properties so far that have been assessed with the grant funds, even though Melissa and I have. Tried to let as many property owners as as we can know about the grant. We have not done as much as I would like to see in Coconino County. And currently, there are two hundred thousand dollars left out of the six hundred thousand dollars. And it needs to be spent by September thirtieth of this year, which is one of the reasons why we're. Here talking to you today and letting everybody that we can do, going to listen. Telling them about the grant. Next slide. I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna skip through these. These are some site-specific success stories. Why don't you go to the next slide, Melissa? This one is one of the sites that in Coconino County off of Highway eighty-nine. It was a former. Pick and run, so a gas station convenience store. It had been cleaned up several years ago, but the owner, who was interested in redeveloping the property or selling it, didn't have anything recent. That said, what if any residual contamination might be in the soil? Once ADQ pulled the underground storage tanks, he also didn't have anything about what was in the building because ADQ won't. When they clean up a, an old gas station, they they don't go into the building and look for asbestos and lead-based paint. So this particular gentleman was able to get a Phase One, Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment and regulated building material survey. That would have cost him thirty-eight thousand dollars, but because this site qualified the use of grant funds, it cost him nothing. And so he's he's able to proceed with plans, do something different with his property. Next slide. And this one is right in downtown Flagstaff. For the cost of about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars out of this current grant and a former grant. City Flagstaff is now qualified for. A lot of federal funding. Why don't you go to the next slide? I think it actually has the title on there, Melissa. Next slide. So. By taking advantage of this grant and a previous brownfield grant, City of Flagstaff and NAPDA are now. Going to be receiving thirty million dollars for a new bus center and a hundred and twenty-two million dollars. For re-channelization of the Rio de la Flag, which of course is very significant. Because all of the businesses that have been downstream of this particular property historically have had to get flood insurance. So it's it's just a real game changer right in the heart of downtown Flagstaff. Because the city and NAPDA were able to use this grant to help get an assessment on its property. Next slide. Next slide. The way this works is that we can't. Make this grant successful. None of these grants are successful if it's just government. That that is aware of it. It takes property owners, business owners, developers, lenders, and community members. To talk about the grant, get the word out that the money is available. And we have been trying and we will continue to try because we do have two hundred thousand dollars that we have to spend between now and the end of September. But if any of you know property owners that might be able to use this, by all means, let them know. And I think, next slide. Melissa, go to the next slide. Here's the. Here's the URL for the NACOG. Webpage that. Has specific information on the grant, including the site nomination form that I mentioned earlier, that property owners need to fill out. And both Melissa and I can also provide that to anybody who's interested. But that's, I think that's about it in a nutshell. Want to go to the next slide, Melissa, and see if I'm missing anything? Okay, that's it. Go to the, go to the next slide or go down if you would.
Yep.
Yep.
I'll go ahead and stop sharing. I will put the link to the website in the chat for everybody.
Mr. Laney, this is Chair Aunt Taveras, and I just want to thank you for that presentation. That was very informational.
Well, thank you. It's it's, you know, City of Flagstaff had one of these grants back in two thousand and twelve. And. They made the money available at that time to the Coconino County. And there were properties, I think there were a half a dozen properties in Coconino County. Some in Williams and other places. That were able to utilize that first grant. And so when NACOG started looking at getting a new grant, I I. You know, said, make sure that you include both Flagstaff and Coconino County because. You know, there's definitely a need there, so I was very pleased when they did that. And, you know, Melissa has been participating in all of the. All of the coalition meetings and calls that we've had. You know, and has has definitely been very active in making sure that the county, property owners in the county have access to the funds.
Yes, and agree, she does keep us very informed, really on a monthly basis. But what you gave us tonight was a far more in-depth information. And so that's why I was commenting that that was very useful information. And thank you again, Mr. Laney.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about it.
Mr. McNeely, and I'm not seeing, let me just do a double check. And I am not seeing any other questions or hands raised. So, Mr. McNeely, would you please proceed to the Board of Supervisors' update?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Wanted to let you know that on January eleventh. The Board of Supervisors heard two zone change requests, both the Munoz Zone Change Request. In Parks Area and the Under Canvas Zone Change Request to add employee housing in the Valley Area. Both of those requests were approved by the Board of Supervisors as they had been recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So any questions from any of the commissioners on on the board's action on those two cases?
Mr. McNeely, I am not seeing any.
Okay.
So let's go ahead and bump to Commission and Staff Roundtable, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. To kick off Commission and Staff Roundtable, again, I refer you back to your study session agendas. We did put a note in here, letting you all know that Commissioners Williams and Ruggles' terms will expire June thirtieth, twenty-three. So not, it's not too early to be thinking about that. We, as staff, of course, are in touch with the board members on a regular basis. In our staff role, we would certainly encourage all of the commissioners to be in touch with your appointing supervisors or any of the supervisors. That you happen to interact with, but certainly for Commissioners Williams and Ruggles, just wanted to give you that that heads up and that reminder. And would would encourage you to reach out to your appointing board members sometime sometime soon. Particularly if you if you're wanting to to retain your position with the commission. And and I got to tell you, we we really enjoy working with you all as your, as our, as our appointed planning and zoning commission, so we'd love to see you stay on. One thing I will point out, I know the question has come up many times, that the district boundaries are projected to change in the future. Those district boundaries, the district boundary changes will not be effective until January first of twenty-five. So all things, the map stays status quo, everyone stays in the district they are currently appointed from until two thousand and twenty-five. So with that, any questions or comments, Madam Chair, or from any of the commissioners?
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Aunt Taveras, and I do have two quick questions. I don't know if this would be for you or if it would be for Director Christelman. But our la, at last, our last meeting, which was when that was on June fourth. Director Christelman informed us that we were going to be having most likely another commissioner. Has that been, has that happened yet? And do we have another commissioner that will be joining us this evening as an appointed and approved commissioner?
So Madam Chair, the board has not taken action to to appoint another commissioner. So the the short answer is no, there there's not another commissioner appointed as of as of today. And I think we've got Jay joining us as well.
Okay, Director Christelman, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Do you have anything to add to that?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening. Jay Christelman here. So I've been in communications with one of the supervisors and there is, for lack of a better term, there's just a vetting process going on. But it's it's still unclear if we do have another commissioner joining us.
Okay. Okay, okay, so when we heard last month that there was going to be one, that has been, that is no longer the plan here. And now there is, what you're saying, a vetting process? And, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, Madam Chair. Yeah, you're right. There's there's hopefully just a continued interruption. And I don't know anything more at this time, unfortunately.
Okay, okay, all right. Well, I was very hopeful after the January fourth meeting that we would have. A seventh commissioner joining us this evening because I think, as everyone is aware, that is staff, commission, our legal counsel. We are running on a shoestring. And it's going to be really nice when we can have more commissioners. It's going to give us a little wiggle room. Do the, do the supervisors who have vacant seats on the commission? Are all of them, I I have to assume, but I'm not going to assume, they must be aware. That there is a six-member commission, we have absolutely no wiggle room whatsoever, and those seats are sitting vacant. Can you give us any update on what any of the supervisors that have vacant seats are doing to fill them? You did speak about the one supervisor. Do you have any information on the on others that have vacant seats?
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Jay here again. We've we have notified them several times. As well as have had have had help from the clerk of the board, who distributes a list of vacancies on all of the boards and committees that they have. And that was recently distributed. We've had, we've had help from the Chair of the Board, tried to prod some of, some action, I guess, into into looking for. Qualified people and we're just not getting a whole lot of. Of candidates.
Okay, so so you're saying that, and and I just want to be sure I'm understanding this, but you're saying the reason. That we, that the vacant positions have not been filled by the Board of Supervisors. Is because they do not have qualified candidates that have applied?
Madam Chair, with the exception of the one commissioner that we're trying to recruit. We haven't seen any applications from any of the other vacancies.
Okay.
Multiple attempts from from staff and from the manager's office trying to help.
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but this has been going on now for. What, when did, when did Dennis Baca kind of officially not be a part of this commission? Was that in May?
Madam Chair, I don't remember, but it's been quite some time.
Yeah, because I'm thinking that we've we've been in this position for about eight months now. And that's, that is quite a while. So I think that your your direction to the commissioners is maybe having a meeting with our commissioners. Or excuse me, our supervisors that have appointed us. And maybe just reiterating on, you know, the urgency of the matter. Because this is, and I'm not saying it because I sit on it, but this is an important commission. And I would hate to see cases not be heard in a timely manner because we simply don't have a commission. So thank you for that direction, and I will just follow up with one. So, thank you for that direction. And I will just follow up with one other one. Do you have on, I believe, February 2019, or was it 2020? Was the last time that the Commission held an in-person hearing? So, I believe I'm correct on that. That means that next month, it will be three years since we have had an in-person public hearing of the Commission. Can you give us an update on what is going on with that?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I can. That, that's a long time, three years. So, the latest that I had heard is that they're going out for bid, they being Facilities Management, they're going out for bid to completely redo the Board Chambers to make them, and I'm not talking about just IT and audiovisual equipment, but completely redo the downstairs of that entire administration building to make it more accommodating for five people on the dais. And in our case, it would be six right now. And they're, they're eliminating a good portion of the lobby. They're putting a full, another full ADA bathroom in. There's going to be a significant amount of work on that first floor. So, it's going to be a while.
Okay, okay. Um, all right. Well, thank you very much for that and for the direction the Commissioners to get in touch with their with their Supervisors. All right, we've got two other Commissioners with their hands raised. I do believe I saw Commissioner Ruggles first and then Vice Chair Burton. We're going to go ahead and bump to you. Commissioner Ruggles, go ahead.
Hey, very nice to know I'm not invisible. Anyway, that aside, I'm a little bit ahead of the discussion on the expiration of terms for two of us on the Commission right now. I have brought this up with Supervisor Blaskas right immediately after the Board decided the layout for the new supervisory districts. And I will be seeing him again about this shortly. However, because we have are kind of operating on a shoestring, as you've said it, I have something that I think would qualify for a term that Mr. Neely brought up, existential conundrum. And I have mentioned that I would like to have a few minutes with both he and Jay relative to this. And it may, may involve a little bit of forwarding the question I have relative to this, to the County's Attorney's Office. That being said, I'm ready to go for another four years if I get it approved. So, there we are.
Okay, um, well, thank you. Thank you for that update, Commissioner Ruggles. And I will, I will just personally say, and I bet I could talk on behalf of the the rest of the Commission and Staff, that we are very happy that you will continue in your service as you are very valuable. So, thank you for that.
Well, don't say that too soon, Tammy. I've, I've got to get agreement from the Board of Supervisors on that.
Right, well, and and I agree, I agree. But regardless of what anybody else thinks, you're valuable to this Commission. So, there, there you go. And thank you, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, for all the work that you do for the Commission and the community as a whole. All right, Vice Chair Burton, your hand is raised.
Um, I just had a question for Director Christelman. Do you happen to know if they have by chance purchased the AV equipment? I know you said a lot of renovation is going to be happening, but I'm wondering if the equipment has actually been purchased.
Yeah, Commissioner Burton, they purchased considerable amount of stuff. I want to say it was nearly a year ago that we that we started testing it out, maybe nine or 10 months ago. Some of it didn't work quite the way I think was expected to work. But from what I understand, they're going to reuse and adapt most of what was purchased. So, it's really, it's really more the configuration of the building itself that doesn't work. They're going to make it mu- much more open, kind of like the City of Flagstaff's Chambers are, if you've been in there.
I haven't, I haven't been in that one.
Okay, it, it's much more open, particularly for the dais. It fit a lot more people. And it's just more, it just works better from a structural standpoint.
Okay, I was just glad to hear that they did have some equipment because we're currently on a 15-plus month wait for new AV equipment. So.
Yep, that was the original 18-month delay was when, when they were trying to set up the, the, the building or the room. You know, for hybrid or even just all virtual meetings, they waited, it was eight, literally 18 months for the equipment to come in.
Oh, yeah, we're still waiting for equipment at the university that we ordered over a year ago. So.
Yep, sounds familiar, unfortunately.
All right, I just, I was just curious about that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a just a quick question and a point relates to our comprehensive plan work. One of the challenges that we have identified is workforce housing. And how we could increase it. It's really gotten to a critical stage in both the city and the surrounding county. It would be extremely exciting to me if we could tax vacation rentals and create trust land that workforce housing could be permanently protected on as workforce housing. So, it would always be no more than 30% of the median income cost, which is the way we're, in my opinion, inadequately defining workforce housing now, because of course, that can always be picked up as a vacation rental or a second home at this point. Question, and and I, and I ask this because we're meeting tomorrow and it'd be nice if there's any chance to have an answer. Can we, in fact, with the new state laws, tax workforce housing, tax vacation rentals? And have a source of income to start working on creating workforce housing? Especially since the demand created by vacation rentals is one of the drivers of cost increases that make, that that are pricing so many employees in the city and the county out of the housing market. And I believe we have many openings in the county we can't fill just for that reason. So, if we could get in, by any wild chance, get an answer on that for our meeting tomorrow, that would be great. And thank you, thank you.
So, thank you, Commissioner Best. On, I am looking real quick here, Mr. McNeely, and I am not seeing any other questions, hand raised or concerns. So, do staff or Commissioners have anything else at this time?
Madam Chair, I as staff don't have anything else. I don't know if Director Christelman has anything. But I don't see that the rest of the staff does. So, I believe we have wrapped up our portion of the roundtable.
All right, then why don't we take, my clock shows 5:14. Why don't we take a approximate 15-minute break and we will start the hearing, the public hearing promptly at 5:30?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. We will see you at 5:30 for the public.
All right, see you then.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's the transaction. Okay.
Mr. McNeeley, this is Chair Aunt Taveris. Can you hear me?
Madam Chair, yes, this is Jess with Community Development Staff and I can hear you.
Okay, I've got a question for you. I am running through, there are sixty participants on the call this evening, or excuse me, at the meeting this evening. And I am looking for Commissioner Mary Williams. Am I just not seeing her?
Madam Chair, I was just doing the exact same thing. And I am seeing five commissioners. I am not, and I don't know how it shows up in your screen, but it shows up when I run through the participants. It's alphabetical and I am not, unless Commissioner Mary Williams is is on this meeting under some kind of, in, under a different name or something based on our computer. I am not seeing Commissioner Mary Williams. We can always ask.
Yeah, let me do a call out. It's 5:30 PM because if she's not here, we don't have a quorum and we won't be having a meeting. So Commissioner Williams, are you with us this evening? Okay, Mr. McNeeley, this is Chair Aunt Taveris. I'm running through it again. And I, I am not seeing her. I, I know her well enough to know that if she, if she heard that, she would respond somehow, some way. So, so here's the situation. When we were talking about a study session, actually just a few moments ago, about this commission operating on a shoestring. On, oh, Commissioner Best, do you have any information?
I just talked to her. She'll be on in just a second.
Okay, thank you. Well, this is Chair Aunt Taveris and I'm just going to continue my comment that at the study session, when we were talking about this commission just operating on a shoestring, this is a very good example of why we need commissioners appointed, additional commissioners appointed to this commission. There are four vacant seats. And again, this is an exhibit of why we need it because this, this community in this county cannot function without a commission.
Absolutely.
Or at least in the land use issues that we deal with.
Yeah, yeah, thank, thank you for making that point, Madam Chair.
So, okay, so let's just wait for her to get on. I'm continuing to run through here. So I will just state, this is Chair Aunt Taveris and I will just state for the record for everyone who is in attendance, on the meeting should have started three minutes ago. But until we have the additional commissioner, we do not have a quorum. And as a result, we cannot have a meeting. So thank you for your patience and bear with us as we wait for this commissioner to get signed in. Mr. McNeeley, this is Chair Aunt Taveris. I'm continuing to scroll through the list of participants. And I am not, I'm still not seeing her. So when you do see her on, actually connect, if you see her before I do, please let me know.
I, I will, Madam Chair.
I just have let her in from the waiting room.
Okay, thank you, Marty.
She should be connecting momentarily.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I am seeing Mary as in the meeting now.
All right, and I am too. I see her down there at the bottom.
I'm here, sorry.
Okay, all right. Thank, thank you, Mary. And now that you're here, we can begin. All right, this is Chair Aunt Taveris. It is 5:36 PM. And I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'm going to start with the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the January 25th, 2023, meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interests of public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plat approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have fifteen days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. Also, do not use the comment function for discussions. It is for communicating with staff if you have a problem, connecting, et cetera, something along that, those lines. With that, thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand, Mr. McNeeley, would you please lead us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alrighty, the second item on the agenda is the approval of the January 4th, 2023 minutes. If there are no modifications or corrections, I will accept a motion in a second to approve these.
I'll move that we approve the minutes from January 4th, 2023.
I will.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Burton and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of the January 4th, 2023 minutes as written. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveris and I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The first item on the public hearings this evening is case number ZC22-002, SUB-22-003, and DRO-22-003.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob Short, our principal planner, is managing this case. I see he already has his screen shared. So if it's okay with you, staff, we'll go ahead and give the staff presentation.
Yes, please, please do.
Thank you, Mr. McNeeley. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is a shout out in Village Phase Two. As Madam Chair said, it is a zone change, a subdivision, and a DRO, a designer review case. And then in terms of the application, the property owners, there are several. Fuelco Travel Center, Lonnie and Debbie McLeve revocable living trust, Finesse Properties LLC, and SMV2 LLC. And these property owners are all from Cave, from Queen Creek, Arizona. The applicant is Tim Campbell of Finesse Properties, also from Queen Creek, Arizona. The location of the property is in North Belmont Commercial Area and Activity Center. The current zoning is PC, that's planned community zone with CH 10,000 standards applied in the size of all of these properties together is 8.58 acres. This is the request. It's a change of zoning regulations in the PC zone from CH 10,000 standards to modified RM 20A and modified CH 10,000 standards, also with approval of a master development plan. It also includes a preliminary subdivision plat approval of an 84 lot townhouse development and design review for the townhouse development and a retail and self-storage development. The design review for the Belmont area plan, actually the design review overlay chapter requires that multifamily developments and commercial developments undergo design review in this, in the Belmont area. This is the vicinity map showing the subject properties. As you can see, it's in, it's in North Belmont. This is the Flagstaff Meadows developments over here. And this is the pilot truck stop. And this is a, an arrow photo showing the subject properties. The, so first of all, you have the existing Shadow Mountain Village. We're now calling that Phase One. When it was done, it was actually just called Shadow Mountain Village. It is already final plated. As you can see, the lots are showing up on the parcel viewer. This is the proposed Shadow Mountain Village Phase Two, would include these two lots. And this is Shadow Mountain and Hughes Retail Plaza, which also includes some self-storage. When Shadow Mountain Village was first approved, that is now known as Shadow Mountain Village Phase One, staff indicated at that time where the commission approved a future development in this area. Now that they're coming forward with a new part of this project, we're asking if they actually develop this, this retail plaza. And this is, these are photos of the proposed sites. And this is the master development plan. As you can see, there's Phase One. This is Shadow Mountain Phase Two. And there's a retail center over here. And then on the north, there's the self-storage. Now, these are the modified standards. There are modifications to, as I said before, both the RM 20A standard and to the CH 10,000 standards. This table in, shows all of the modifications basically to the RM 20A standards. And what this does is it allows for a townhouse development. Without these standard changes, this type of development would not be possible. And also, the only real thing for the CH 10,000 standards is that it would allow a reduction of landscaping and that's primarily for the self-storage development. As you may know by now, self-storage developments are long linear buildings and the zoning ordinance requires the landscaping be applied per each hundred feet of the, the perimeter of a building. That ends up in a lot of landscaping. That ends up in a lot of landscaping for these self-storage buildings. So we're looking at changing that in our zoning ordinance in the near future. This is the preliminary plat for Shadow Mountain Village Phase Two.
Mr. Short, could you please hold on a minute? I would like to speak to everybody that is in the meeting this evening. There are 75 participants. I need everyone to mute and turn off your cameras, please. Thank you. Mr. Short, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the preliminary plat for Shadow Mountain Village Phase Two. It is kind of turned on its side, so north is pointing to the right. So this is toward the National Forest. This is Shadow Mountain Drive on this side. And this is Shadow Mountain Phase One on this side. So you can see it's pretty much the same kind of layout as Shadow Mountain One. It just kind of, it did, it just kind of blends in, you know, perfectly with Shadow Mountain One. Looks like the same development, and it kind of is the same development in many ways. One of the things that happened in this particular development is we required, this is per Belmont area plan policies, we required that an eight-foot public pathway be put along this edge. And that, unfortunately, the Belmont area plan had not passed before Phase One went in, so that same path is not there for Phase One. However, they do come, they run together. This, this will be actually a, an eight-foot path, eight-foot access pedestrian easement with, with, with a five-foot sidewalk that will go around this way. Now, I'll show you in a minute on the site plan, but we actually noted that this is not where the path is proposed for. It actually would go around this detention pond right here in the site plan. So I've asked the applicant to change that before it goes to the Board of Supervisors. This is a site plan showing the proposed development. Again, you can see that the path would actually come out. There's a wall that goes along here, a six-foot wall that's consistent with Phase One. And the path would actually have an opening right here with a gate, so the public could come through here and, and take this path that gives access to, to the National Forest, although access is also available right here, because this is National Forest as well, right on this east side. This shows the housing. I'll show you more of that later, and this shows the floor plans for the housing. And as you can see, there's also, this is a kind of an extension of a detention area that the applicant's also using as a park area. This is the landscape plan for Phase, for Phase Two. It uses the same types of plants as Phase One, which are drought-resistant and native plants. This shows the lighting fence and signage standards. The, the signage right here is already in place. It's already been built for Phase One. And you can see these, this, this downlight, these will go on the different housing structures. And this is a bollard that would light paths and walkways throughout the subdivision. This is the design of the wall around the subdivision, and this is the fencing standard. These are the amenities, basically, the design of the park enlargement plan. The park would, will be extended further to the east into this section of the subdivision, and basically, the same types of standards, same types of, of design would go into this one as well. It looked like there, there was a gazebo that was proposed in this park, this part of the park. Now, these are the designs of the homes. And this is the front of the homes, so I'll show you. There are four different schemes. I'll show you each of those. And note that the, the front faces a sidewalk while the rear faces the street. So that's a, that's a new urbanist-type design. It, it has become popular in recent years. So if you're in one of the houses that faces the forest, then this would be facing the forest, and the back would be facing the street. So this is color scheme number one. This is color scheme number two. This is color scheme number three. And this is number four. And this is consistent, of course, with Shadow Mountain Phase One, because you, you don't want to suddenly change your color schemes for a new phase. And this is what the rear would look like. This is color scheme three, and what the rear would look like. You see the garage is at the back on the streets. And this shows a, kind of a side view of an end unit for a color scheme Phase One. These are, this is the materials and colors, basically. Shingles would be used, architectural shingles, and these are the different, different color schemes. I'm only going to show you a couple of these. They're all in your packet, so I don't want to get too redundant with this. This is another one. This is rustic brown shingles. This photograph is actually a house that's already been developed in Shadow Mountain Phase One, and it's, it basically is meant to show you that this is a wrought iron fence that would be built with each of these, with each of these housing, kind of gives you some privacy in this, this small front yard that they have. You can see people have chairs set up. This is a nice little patio area here. There's a little fire pit with chairs. This is, this is a site plan for the retail development. And as you can see, this is the roundabout. This is the pilot road that goes up into, for trucks, take it, trucks only, pretty much take it up into the pilot. Cars can choose to do this. Actually, it'd be coming in from this way. And then there's a drive-through through here and back out. This landscaping, this is their landscape plan. The landscaping is actually in the right-of-way, and that is allowed by the zoning ordinance. Some of these trees may have to be moved. As I talked to Public Works, they indicated that they can't be inside triangles, and there's various places that can't be. So we'll look at that in more detail later when the building permit is approved for this. And you can see how, this is kind of a rendition, rendering of how it would look. You can see the lighting proposed over here. And this is another picture of the building. You can see that they have these kind of, these colors that blend with the natural environment that kind of blend with our tones. The green kind of reflects the ponderosa pine. The red reflects the bark of the ponderosa pine, and also the rustic look that is discussed in the Belmont area plan. And this is, this is gray split-face block here. The black, the back doesn't have colors, but it's basically gray split-face block with the greens on each side. And this is the site plan for the self-storage. And you can see the landscaping. This, this is landscaping that is conceptual, but approved through this zone change process, so that later on, the applicant doesn't need to meet the full landscape requirements, which are quite substantial and really don't, don't make sense. That's why we're making that change in our zoning ordinance at this point. So you can see the landscaping, and this is the lighting. These are just, this is not how the buildings would look. It's, this is just to, to show the fencing. And this is actually how the buildings would look. The part that you would see from the outside, most of this, all of the garage doors, of course, would point inward, and the outside would be this nice tan color right here. I want to talk about compliance with the different plans. This one has two, three different plans that it has to comply with. First one is the comprehensive plan. And it, it asks that there be adequate public safety services and adequate emergency routes. So this does create a new emergency route out of the subdivision, because it's basically another street. There is an emergency access. It's, I think it's a 10-foot tall metal gate over on the, the pilot drive, and that will remain in place. It's already been built, so they will have three accesses out of this site. This is a land use and growth goal, which is to ensure a range of housing choices in a variety of communities that are well-designed in terms of character, natural environment, availability of services. The good thing, of course, about Belmont is they have, they have water and sewer services available. And there's, as you probably know, a fire station just right down the street, if not, actually, across the street from this development. So they're really close to those essential services. And of course, the, the cop plan, the county encourages subdivisions over lot splits. They are much more organized and much more well-designed. This is a compliance with the Flagstaff Regional, Regional Plan. And this, this particular development is actually hidden on all cylinders with both the Flagstaff Regional Plan and with the Belmont area plan, as you'll see in a minute. But it encourages activity centers and corridors to provide housing of various types, especially attached in multifamily across a wide range of price points. So this, the, these are more affordable housing than in lots, a lot of the Flagstaff region. Unfortunately, it's, it's hard to meet that definition of affordable housing here, as you know. It also says, consider the compatible integration of residential uses and proposed employment centers to reduce vehicle trips and commute times. So this is a nice mixed-use development with services right next door to this residential development. Consistent with the next one, incorporate neighborhoods, support retail, and other commercial uses within new and re-invented employment centers. And this is the Belmont area plan compliance. These are the policies from the Belmont area plan. It says, new residential development should create a connected and safe community by an integrated signed and well-planned trail system. So this does integrate a part of a trail system. Open space and forest access should be a priority when designing projects adjacent to the Coconino National Forest. This one obviously does. And developers of new development should demonstrate that an adequate level of utility services and public infrastructure is available. And of course, I just discussed that services are available here. And these are from the land use and growth section of Belmont area plan. It says, within the rural activity center, mixed-use development combining residential with neighborhood supporting commercial is strongly supported. And that describes this, this proposal, this development to a T right there. Restaurants, a neighborhood grocery store, retail stores should be the preferred type of business in North Belmont. It proposes those themes. And mixed-use commercial development in the rural activity center should be of a scaling char, character compatible with surrounding residential neighborhoods in Belmont. And obviously, this new plaza is compatible with this neighborhood. And finally, in terms of public safety, within the rural activity center, pedestrian safety and walkability to adjacent neighborhoods is a priority. Additional signs, sidewalks, and enhanced multimodal street crossings may be required to ensure safe, walkable access to rural activity centers. Now, this is the Belmont area plan, future plan use map. I have circled this site, and if you look at the candy stripe, the red and white striped area, that is the activity center. The existing commercial area was not defined as part of the activity center by the Belmont area plan. So these, the properties of the retail would be is in this, what, this commercial area here in tan, in the tan color. Both of those support mixed-use development. In terms of citizen participation, property owners within 1,000 feet of subject property were notified. That was approximately 200 property owners. And they held a meeting on January 26, 2022. That's just about a year ago. And this, this project was delayed quite a bit over some transportation issues. The applicant supports, reports that seven people provided questions and comments. Most of those did express support for various aspects of the project. There were some concerns expressed, emergency access, impacts to the water system, and also future development in the area. And with that, these are the findings of fact for a zone change. I have addressed those in the staff report. These are the findings for a preliminary plat. I've also addressed those. We can discuss those if you would like. If you have any questions about that. And in terms of a design review, the commission had needs to determine that the, that the design meets the area plan design guidelines. And these are some of the ways in which it does. It has muted earth tone colors. It is gray, tan, cream, brown, and muted greens and blues. It has woodlapped siding and shingles and red, brown, rusted colors. The lighting conforms to the ordinance. It's fully shielded and also complies with the Zone 2 lighting standards, which apply to all of Belmont now. And its site design has pedestrian and bicycle access, bicycle racks, native and drought-tolerant, drought-resistant plants. And with that, staff recommends, the commission forwards a recommendation of approval of ZC 22-002 and S U B 22-003 to the board with the conditions in the staff report and approves DRO 22-003. So the commission, these two cases, the zone change and the subdivision moves on to the board. The DRO is approved by the commission. So that requires three motions, as I have laid out here and, and just explained. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Short. This is Chair Aunt Taveras. Commissioner Best?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions. We, am I correct in saying that we're dead, ending a trail into the Forest Service?
It, Mr. Best, it doesn't really dead-end there. It just kind of skirts the edge of the forest. That's what it does, basically.
Okay. Have we talked to the forest at all about social trails and that sort of thing, if they wanted to take any action?
In this, in this case, as you've probably seen before, let me go back to that map. If you see this, let's see if I can find the indication for it over here. There, the, this, this indicates pedestrian linkage right here. And you can see that it starts right here, and it goes around this area. So this would be the part of the trail that we're talking about. Whenever the, the commission recommended approval of Shadow Mountain Wells, which is over here, they also approved a trail behind that. And we've also looked at trails along here for some development out, out in this, in this area. So this is kind of continuation of the trail. It's, it's really difficult, obviously. It's more difficult to get a trail on, on forest land. So that's why we have asked the developer to put it on private land. So the, the, the point is to put it on private land as much as possible. But that is something that I, I'm not sure if that was discussed with the Forest Service. I'm pretty sure the Forest Service was involved in the Belmont area plan, and, and they did discuss this at that time. But in this particular case, for this particular application, I have not discussed this with the Forest Service.
Seems like it ought to be standard operating procedure, just to at least put in a call. I know they're overwhelming the board, but you know, there might be a volunteer group out there, or somebody who could put together some rational trail in the Forest Service, because I'm sure a lot of social trails will pop up.
Yeah, that's a really good point, Commissioner Best. I think one of the issues that we had was that the pilots already developed, and well, and so is Shadow Mountain One. Yeah, that's a really good point, Commissioner Best. I think one of the issues that we had was that the pilots already developed, and well, and so is Shadow Mountain One. Uh, the first phase is shadow mountain. There is a, there is a, the sidewalk continues. It actually gets narrower. So it's a five-foot sidewalk in this little part, port here, if you can see that. And then it's a four-foot sidewalk. So this portion of the trail is kind of covered. It's on private land. But yeah, I mean, th- this is open. As far as I know, there is no proposal for a fence here. Uh, I don't believe the applicants proposing a fence fencing around this area. So. Yes, people can walk out into the forest from here. There's, there's no doubt about it. That is an issue. One of the issues is that pilots already developed, so they're not going to want to develop a trail on their property. So yeah, that, that connection right there is probably going to be the most important one.
Yeah, it seems like the main thing we just do. Do our best to contact the Forest Service. I mean, there could be an archaeological site out there. You just never know. Uh. And whether we do it or the applicant does it, somebody should do it. Um. I don't see a weed mitigation clause, and I'll add it to condition fifteen unless I've missed something.
Commissioner Best, I think in this case, because it's such a dense development and landscaping covers all the open spaces. Uh, we don't expect to have a weed mitigation. If, if the landscaping isn't there like it's supposed to be, that's a code violation. So there really isn't anything open that would grow weeds.
But my, uh, what stimulated that was uh. Condition fifteen talks about hydro seeding. And anytime you've got enough real estate to have to hydro seed with native plants. Uh, the native plants are can be, are competing with the non-native invasive plants. So you'd want somebody out there having a look. If there's, if there's no real estate that we're actually doing that to, that, then we can skip it, but. Uh, that's, that's why I was interested in putting it in there.
Mr. Best, thanks for pointing that out. I'll take a look here and we, we can, we can add that.
And my final was um. Could you bring up the landscape plan for the cell storage? Uh, so. Is there any landscaping along the road in front of the wall, I guess it is?
There, there is some, uh, and I think the, the issue with that. You can see some down here.
Yeah.
Uh, we, the applicant wanted to put this on kind of to block the view in, into there. And then here as well. The issue with this is like currently this belongs to the county. This is, this belongs to Coquenino County. But my understanding is that it will be turned over to, to the pilot's truck stop at some point. So that would be putting landscaping into private property that, that the applicant doesn't, doesn't own. So down here, if you go further down, like I showed you on the retail, let's see if that, well, we can go back to that later if we need to, but. Yeah, I can think I can get there pretty quick. Yeah, be good on here. Then this becomes, you know, part of the, this is part of the roundabout, and this is part of public, public ride of waste through here. So this is appropriate to, to landscape. But that, we weren't, we weren't totally clear about that. That's why there wasn't landscaping there. There wasn't really a public road so much as more of a private driveway for the pilot.
Uh-huh. Well, it, yeah. Not looking at a big enough map right now, but it seems like that long wall is going to be pretty obtrusive, and if we could get some. Tall landscaping, you know, something to break up that wall, it would be consistent with the DRO.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Um.
That, you know, it's just not that nice to have a bare wall.
Right.
So, but it, it sounds complicated, and uh, I will leave that up to you, and thank you very much. If there's anything we can do right now, I, I'd love to hear about it, but it sounds like. It's a little complicated with the, the land ownership situation.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Best.
If you, if there's a condition we could put in that would help. Uh. Please suggest it, like if, if they come in. If the applicant. Comes into ownership of that property, that it would be landscaped or something, but I, I, I'm a little confused about that ownership situation.
I think we could put a, we could add to that uh, condition fifteen that you're talking about. We could put something in there that indicates that if uh. If available, the applicant will apply landscaping along the pilot. Drive, I think it's called. I'm not sure what this is called, actually. They have an actual name for it at this point.
Okay.
I'll see if I can, if I can put something in like that, because that, that is a good idea. I was concerned about that as well.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Best, and I'm going through. Uh, Mr. Short, and I do not see any other commissioners who have questions. So I'm going to go ahead and move to the applicant. On, but, uh, Mr. Short, if you could please uh, put together. Uh, a condition, so when we come back to that and start moving on the motions, it'll be ready to go.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Short.
I was just saying, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I will, I will work on that.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Short. I appreciate it. All right, I'm going to ask if the applicant. Or the applicant's representative is present tonight and would like to address the commission. And I would also like to ask if so, if you have read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions that it contains. So I am looking, give me a minute, because it takes a while to scroll through seventy-eight participants. Um. All right, I've, I showed Jen Smith. Ms. Smith, are you the applicant?
Yeah, um. This is Darren Smith.
Okay, Darren, would you please state your full name and your address for the record? And then go ahead and, and address my question and anything else you would like to bring to the commission.
Yeah, my name is Darren Smith. My address is three oh two South Fourth Street. Flagstaff, Arizona, eight six zero zero one.
Okay, and Mr. Smith, did you read, did you get the staff report? Read it and agree with the conditions?
Uh, yes, we did read through it and uh, agreed with the conditions.
Okay, uh, do you have anything else you would like to add at this time?
Um, the. No, I mean, uh, you know, I mean, it's pretty straightforward project, so I don't really have any, you know, anything else to add. If anybody else has any questions, obviously, I'd. I'd love to answer them. As far as the landscape goes. Um, li- like Bob was saying, it is, you know, it's, it's county right-of-way land right now. We did landscape the county right-of-way up by the roundabout where most of the traffic is going to be. Uh, where it's going to be visible by more traffic. Um, the area that uh. Um, that the council member was talking about is going to be kind of a truck stop. Um, driveway, private drive. Um, so the only people that are really going to be seeing that is going to be the truck drivers. Um, and since it is county right-of-way and will be at some point pilot property. It wasn't something that we really had the, the authority to landscape, and that's why we didn't show anything in that area.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for that explanation. I am going to ask if any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant this evening? And I. Am not seeing any. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public comment portion. I'm going to ask if anyone in the public. Wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? If so, please raise your hand or unmute. I will call on you. I'll ask you to state your name and address for the record, please, and then you will be given three minutes. And let's see. Okay, I see. A Michael White. Mr. White, um, please state your name and address for the record. And then your three minutes will begin.
Michael White, one two two one zero Perseus Road, Belmont. I have a question on, is the height of the new townhomes going to stay the same? My concern is when we purchased the property. Um, we picked a certain lot based on views, and it seems as if the new phase is going to obstruct. Uh, all those mountain views from, from that side of the road.
Uh, Mr. Short, I'm going to ask if you would address that question, please?
Uh, Madam Chair, yes, the uh, the height of the townhomes would be the same as the ones that are there, that it would be thirty feet.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Okay, is there anyone else in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? If so, please raise your hand or unmute. And seeing none, I'm going to close it to the public comment section. And I'm going to open it at commission um, discussion level. Uh, Commissioner Ruggles, would you please start us off this evening?
Okay, uh, I think that uh, as the applicant stated, this is pretty much uh. Just an extension of uh, what we already have with uh, stage one. Um. I have no problems with anything that is being proposed. I think. Uh, the only question that I had was um. Excuse me, was relative to the color scheme. Uh, I wasn't clear exactly uh. Which one of the color schemes is the same as stage one? But uh, regardless of that, uh, I think all of them are quite good. And at that. I will uh, leave it at that for other members. For other commissioners to discuss.
Okay, um, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Uh, Mr. Short. So we can address Commissioner Ruggles' question right now. Uh, would you, can you please give an answer to that?
Uh, Madam Chair, yes, the, the developer is actually really. Uh, obviously, they wanted their, their development to be consistent throughout, have a consistent look and color throughout. So they're using the same color schemes as for phase one. Uh, I don't know of any new color schemes that might, might have been added. Um, but uh, that, that's my understanding is that definitely is consistent with phase one. You could even see some of the. The, the blue examples that I showed are the one that was already developed that was blue, so.
Yeah, and, and actually, I do understand Commissioner Ruggles' questions, because uh, the three color schemes were put out. So if I'm understanding it correctly, all three of those color schemes already exist in phase one, and they will simply be continued into phase two.
That is my understanding. There's actually four, so there's these four. And yeah, that's my understanding that it will be the same, and obviously, the, the developer did talk to us about. Making sure that it was consistent. They wanted to use some of the same ones again.
Okay, okay.
Well, thank you very much for the answer, and I was uh, just uh, concerned about the consistency, and that answers that, so very good. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. All right, um, I am, give me a minute here to scroll through. I am not seeing any other commissioners either unmuted or with hands raised. Um. Or at least for questions. So Commissioner Williams, we're still in the commission discussion, so if you would like to uh, give us your thoughts, please?
Um, I think it looks like a nice development. Um. Um, I'm happy to. See it move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Best?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um. I also, I'm, I'm pretty enthusiastic about this, because uh, for a long time, I've been waiting for. Some just friendly neighborhood retail to show up uh. Out in this area. There's a lot of housing to support it now. Uh, it's nice that these folks can enjoy a restaurant and what other. Whatever other retail goes in without having to drive to Flagstaff, so uh, that's a nice improvement. Um. I think the only thing I would add is condition fifteen, I would add at the end of it. And then weed mitigation plan shall be established. Again, uh, anytime there's enough bare dirt to be hydro seeding, uh, the. What you're putting down is competing with the invasive plant, so you want somebody out there monitoring over time, and I'm sure that the, whoever maintaining the landscaping. Can do that if they are required to. Other than that, uh, it all looks great, and I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best, and just to keep in order, on the screen, we have condition number fifteen. Uh, there it is, and let's look. Commissioner Best, would please look at this condition? And the modifications that have been made. Let's make sure we're on the same page, all of us are on the same page here.
And Commissioner Best, uh, I added this little piece, but I'm not sure if that, if that's adequate. It basically says that all, uh, and all weeds shall be removed, but if you would like to put in a weed mitigation plan at the, and we could do that instead.
Yeah, it, you know, uh. I, I know I harp on this quite a bit, but weeds never stop. They're always, the seeds are always arriving, and anytime there's disturbed soil, they tend to get going. So what we want is the landscaper to have the mandate to keep his eye, his or her eye out for weeds. And take action.
Look, and can you repeat that uh, sentence that you had?
Yes, an invasive weed mitigation plan shall be established.
Okay, so do we want to then remove? And all weeds shall be removed since that sentence has been put in there?
That sounds good to me. It would be a duplication.
Okay, so now. I would like Commissioner Best, you, and I would like all of the other commissioners to look at this, please. So when we do do the modification to the conditions, we, we're, we've got it.
And, and I'm assuming, uh, Mr. Short, that. At all the landscaping is native or, or approved plants. That's just part of what we do normally, so we don't have to. Include any language to cover that, is that correct?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Best, they are of. They are native, native plants, or they're drought. Drought, just some plants, excuse me.
But they're, they're on our list, yeah.
Right, yes.
Okay, okay, so Commissioner Best, I'm, I'm going to ask if any of the commissioners. Um, have any problems with the wording on this, to raise your hand now. Just trying to keep all this in order. I, I personally, this is Chair Antiveras, and I do believe that the wording is correct on this, so I approve this. Commissioner Best?
Yes, I approve it.
Okay, and I'm not seeing any other commissioners raising hands or unmuting, so, okay, we've got the wording of that. Um, okay, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Clifford?
I think it's a good project. We know, we knew it was going to come. Come to us here pretty quick, and uh, we've already seen part of it, and uh, it's going to be a good addition for out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Vice Chair Burton?
Um, I don't have any additional comments. I think everyone's said what I was thinking. It's, it's a continuation of what we already expected, and it looks good.
Thank you. Uh, and this is Chair Antiveras. I can make the findings for all of the requests that are before us tonight. Uh, and I will just echo my fellow commissioner's statements that this is a. Very, very nice project, and um, I think it's going to be a great addition to the county, and I'm quite excited to see it be developed. So with that, we need three individual motions on. The first two are going to be a motion for a recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors, so. Three separate motions, and let's go ahead and get started.
Great, I would uh, like to start this. I would like to uh, move that uh, we uh. Approve ZC dash twenty-two dash zero zero two for submission to the Board of Supervisors.
That good.
Uh, who was that second from?
Uh, Vice Chair Burton.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, I've got a motion uh, by Commissioner Ruggles, a second by Vice Chair Burton. Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, I've got a motion, uh, by Commissioner Ruggles, a second by Vice Chair Burton. Uh, to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for PZ, or excuse me, for ZC two-two dash zero zero two. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Oh, hold on a minute. Oh, wait a minute, that condition, I am sorry, that condition fifteen that we just Um, I'm sorry, the modification will come on the next one. Uh, okay, Commissioner Clifford said aye. Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveris. I also vote aye. So ZC two-two dash zero zero two passes unanimously With a recommendation for approval to the Board of Supervisors. This is the one, the next one, PZ S, or SUV, or two-two dash zero zero three Is the one we, that we need to make the motion for modification for number fifteen, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion that, uh, We submit our approval to the Board of Supervisors for SUB dash two-two dash, dash zero zero three With the conditions as modified.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion by Vice Chair Burton, a second by Commissioner Best, On to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for SUB two-two dash zero zero three With the modification to condition number fifteen, as stated. Commissioner Ruggles? Yeah, all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveris. I also vote aye. SUB twenty-two zero zero three will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval With the modification of, uh, condition number fifteen as stated. And I need a final motion on DRO twenty-two zero zero three, please.
I'll move to approve DRO twenty-two dash zero zero three.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Williams and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of DRO two-two zero zero three. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveris. I also vote aye. DRO two-two dash zero zero three passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda this evening is CUP two-two dash one-one-eight.
Madam Chair, this is Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff. Uh, case number CUP dash two-two dash one-one-eight Is a conditional use permit request for campground on a forty acre, forty acre G-zone parcel On, uh, Alta Via Road in the Valley Grand Canyon Junction area. The applicants in that case have requested a continuance to the February twenty-second, twenty-three commission meeting. We actually received, um, this continuance request, uh, last week, um, a- actually early last week. And included in your packets a memorandum, um, to, to that effect. Uh, so at the, um, at the applicant's request, uh, I would like to see, um, Ed, Uh, Madam Chair, um, we would, uh, like to see if the commission would, would like to, uh, to grant that request with a motion and approval.
Okay, and thank you for that, uh, Mister McNeely. Yes, everything has been documented that this is the applicant's request. Therefore, I will accept a motion from, uh, the, the commissioners for a Motion to continue to the February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three meeting, please.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to do that. I move to Continue case number CUP twenty-two dash one-one-eight Until the February twenty-second hearing of the planning and zoning.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles, a second by Vice Chair Burton To continue CUP two-two dash one-one-eight to February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveris. I also vote aye. CUP two-two dash one-one-eight has been continued to February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. The next item on the agenda is CUP two-one dash zero eight four.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning and Zoning Staff. CP twenty-one zero eight four is a request for a conditional use permit for a drug and alcohol recovery care center On a thirty-point-two-one acre parcel in the general zone. The property is located at thirteen ninety-two Mokie Drive in the Blue Ridge area. Property owner and applicant are Lisa Gibbs, and the applicant's representative is Tevis Reich. A couple hours before the hearing, uh, the applicant's representative emailed me And asked for a continuance to the February twenty-second Twenty-twenty-three hearing in order to, uh, work out some concerns that they had on the recommended condition number two Regarding, uh, the road improvement and maintenance. And so staff is recommending that continuance to February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Mister Short. On the, because you have received a, a, excuse me, a written memorandum From the applicant's representative. Um, we are going to go ahead for continuance. We are going to go ahead and move to a motion in a second, please, To continue CUP two-one dash zero eight four to February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, I'll move that we continue CUP twenty-one dash zero eight four to February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, I think Commissioner Williams got in there. I've got a motion from Vice Chair Burton, a second by Commissioner Williams Uh, to continue CUP two-one dash zero eight four to February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveris. I also vote aye. CUP two-one dash zero eight four has been continued To February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. The final item on the agenda tonight is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to address the commission this evening for items not on the agenda, Please raise your hand or unmute, and I will call on you. Not seeing any? Um, Now I do see Commissioner Ruggles, and I see Commissioner Clifford unmuted. Nope, Commissioner Clifford is muted, and so is Commissioner Ruggles. All right, seeing no one that wishes to address the commission for items not on the agenda, My clock shows six thirty-three PM, and the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone, and I will see you on February twenty-second.
Good night, commissioners, thanks for being here.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.